Good. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Welcome to all members of county council staff and the public. And councillor Fraser won't be with us today. Joining us is councillor Anibal from North Dundas. So I'll call the meeting to order by resolution.
It's moved by councillor Broad, seconded by councillor Dencham, that the meeting of the council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
All those in favor, motion is carried and unopposed. Adoption of the agenda, madam clerk.
It's moved by councillor Bergeron, seconded by councillor Guedon, that council approve the agenda.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Are there any disclosure or pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, adoption of the minutes.
It's moved by councillor Dencham, seconded by councillor Bergeron, that the minutes of the meetings of the council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry, including the in-camera minutes held October twenty first and November second, twenty twenty four, be adopted and circulated.
Thank you. Any, any discussion on the minutes or errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to number seven, contracted plowing services. Madam clerk.
It's moved by councillor Anibal, seconded by councillor Broad, that the council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry award the tender for five-year contracted plowing services to GIP Paving Incorporated, with their unit prices for one year totaling nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, and that council authorizes the manager of operations to sign all documents to give effect to the contract.
Thank you. Welcome, Trevor.
Morning, council, Mr. Warden. Yes, so here this morning, seeking authorization to award our plow, our contracted plow services tender. As you may recall, I was here in August, just making sure that council was happy with the direction of our services at that time, and we received a message to go with no, no major changes. So we've issued the tender as such. One small change we made this year, we did open it up so that contractors would be able to bid on just an individual patrol garage instead of having to take all five. But as it turns out, the successful bidder was the same contractor for all four patrol garages, and that's all five trucks. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but this would be a contract that starts into effect the next winter. We're still on our current term for this winter season.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments, councillor Dencham?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the report. I just noticed in the report it says that the rate per kilometer has increased by approximately forty-five percent, which is a huge hike. And at what point does it make sense to increase, increase our internal staff versus contracting, especially since we're kind of breaking this up into pieces and therefore it implies we could potentially, by increasing our staff, we could take a portion of them and either allot it to one of those segments or, or not, depending on the circumstance of the year?
So in the previous contract that was awarded, so the one that we're operating under right now, there was a, there was a major change in prices all around the board. So at that time, staff did a major dive investigating as to what would be feasible to bring it in-house. And what really prohibits that or what makes it cost prohibitive at this point is the equipment needed, so the capital uptake on the extra equipment, the housing requirement upgrades for that equipment, and then it's again additional operators for that, where it's really just for a winter season work. So we did note that the, the kilometer rate did change significantly. However, we feel, still feel that it's comparable because that's where the, the variable rates of the contractor are going to come into play, their fuel, their labor costs, et cetera, where the previous contract was structured and awarded just given one percent on their submitted bid at that point in time. And if you can recall, from, from that contract being awarded, we're giving one percent, inflation's four percent, we're giving one percent, inflation's eight. So the, although it's a high increase, I believe that the outgoing rate was kind of held artificially low as well, so it plays double on those numbers a little bit.
Okay, thank you. For the questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? The motion is carried, none opposed. Thanks, Trevor. Moving on to bylaws, tri-party medical loan agreement with Dr. Julie Crevié and the city of Cornwall. Madam clerk.
It's moved by councillor Bergeron, seconded by councillor Landry, that bylaw number five, four, seven, zero, being a bylaw to authorize the tri-party medical loan agreement with Dr. Julie Crevié and the city of Cornwall, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you, Warden. As council is aware, the city of Cornwall and SDG counties have been discussing this medical recruitment project. And, and in this case, it's a doctor that was originally supposed to practice just within the city of Cornwall, but now wishes to practice within SD and G as well. So we had discussions with county staff and city administration on a potential amendment to their agreement as doctor recruitment, medical recruitment and collaboration with our health partners, as in council strategic plan. So this agreement would basically split the hours fifty percent between SD and G and the city of Cornwall, working in the Centre de Santé Communitaire d'Estrie, which has locations in both Alexandria and Chrysler as well. So recommending council pass this bylaw and, and enter into the agreement with the city of Cornwall.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councillor Guedon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, question for the director of planning. I was just wondering, I believe we talked about it earlier, but I can't recall, are, is the physician taking on a, taking on an existing practice or, essentially what I'm getting at is how many new openings are going to be created from this agreement in terms of clients?
My understanding is there are new openings. Originally, we're looking at a different facility, potentially the hospital, but this was a position that opens up, and it's a clinic, so it's, there's general openings as well. So it could be, again, not just limited to patients, too. The Cornwall, SD and G residents would also be able to attend the Cornwall clinic as well. But it would be open to, as part of a new practice, but in an existing clinic.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I certainly support this. I think we have to look at different ways of incentivizing doctors to come work in our region. Just a question with regards to the Centre de Santé Communitaire d'Estrie. It, the, that organization typically services the Francophone population, to my, to my knowledge. And so I'm just curious as to whether or not the Anglophone population will be able to be serviced by this doctor as well. Thank you.
Just trying to double check off the top of my head. I don't think there's a specific restriction, but the service is aimed at the Francophone population.
Okay.
It was never discussed that it would be limited to only English or French in our discussions with the city, I think.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could please find out, because, you know, everybody is looking for a doctor. So, you know, we really don't want to be, to be funding this and find that the Anglophone population is excluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Landry.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. So in regards to the Centre d'Estrie there or the clinic de santé communautaire, when you say that, is she going to be rotated? Because I know Chrysler has one of their offices there. Is it something where she'll be rotating through all of the, and how many is there in SD and G under this Centre d'Estrie?
So right now, the intention would be Alexandria and Cornwall. There is Chrysler. The other ones are just outside. They're more in Limoges, Bourget and, and other areas. But in terms of the hours and discussions with the city, it's, and patients, it's fifty percent Cornwall, fifty percent SD and G. I won't specify, but I understand Alexandria is the intent, but it's not ruled out in the agreement that it has to be Alexandria. It's just SD and G.
And the way this, sorry, Mr. Warden, yeah, so subsequent, the way that the Centre d'Estrie is structured is they might have a nurse practitioner at the clinic and they can bring in a doctor is, would that be something, is it strictly to Alexandria? So everybody would have to go and she would operate out of Alexandria? Or I thought there was maybe more. I wasn't aware that there was only Alexandria and Chrysler that had the two in SD and G. I thought there was possibly more Centre d'Estrie, but just curiosity, would she be offering her services at both locations?
My understanding is the intent is the Alexandria clinic, but the agreement doesn't specify that. It's just SD and G in Cornwall. So it could also be Chrysler, but in the agreement, we don't say, you know, twenty percent Chrysler, thirty percent Alexandria. It's just fifty percent SD and G, fifty percent Cornwall.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bergeron, then.
Thank you, Warden. I'm thinking if maybe we should defer this because I think it's very important to know if the services are only restricted in SD and G to the Francophone population. I didn't think of that before, but I, I think it should be open to any resident of SD and G.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dencham, then. Councillor McGillis?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I, just following the line of thinking across many of the questions here, again, it's a fantastic initiative. I think it's something we need to support. And, because we never have enough doctors, but I, I think where the, the challenge lies is in terms of who is actually receiving the services. So this, this probably logistically makes sense to be a county level initiative so that it's easier to coordinate. But fundamentally, wherever the services are rendered, that's kind of where potentially the costs should flow, because that's the municipality that is benefiting from that. So it's kind of a two-part comment. One is, is there some way to organize this so that the municipalities that are benefiting can actually receive or would bear the cost because they receive the benefit? I forgot my second point, so we'll stick with one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Councillor McGillis.
Thank you. I have two questions, one of which is, thank you, Mr. Warden. Was there a lot, was a lot of interest shown throughout the med students? Was it just the one?
So this is the first time we've had these discussions with the city of Cornwall. I know just from my own background, my dad was a doctor that worked in this area as well, that the geographic, working in different townships is not even part of what they're thinking is. People work in, they can work one day in Aquasosne, one day in Cornwall, one day in the Lancaster clinic, and that's fairly common for practitioners throughout SD and G. And same with patients. You can have patients that live in the city of Cornwall but go to the Winchester Hospital, or live in South Dundas but go into the, the clinic in Ingleside. So I think, I guess it would be possible, where we've only kind of talked about SD and G Cornwall in terms of the tracking of the, the patients. And it might be possible to do that, but generally for medical services, people don't necessarily stick to their township. They may have clinics throughout the region that they would attend and go to multiple townships. So we've kept the agreement regional and also based on the, the strategic priority of doing a regional recruitment versus individual municipalities to each doing their own. So this is the first time, though, that we've had this agreement.
That's just more of a comment. I was just wondering, talk maybe at this to our CEO. It looks like there's a flavor of approving this, having a doctor here in pain, our fair share of seventy-five thousand dollars. But could we not write it in our motion, resolution, that we will support this in the event that we make sure that the, that it's, that it's going to be covering all, all the people in, in the community, not just the Francophone? So we can put that right in our motion, we'll support this in the event that, so they can, it will pass that way, so that we can assure that everything's going to be up and up. Is that fair? In the motion?
I'm not in favor of that, just, but I mean, we have other speakers, so councillor Broad, then councillor Dencham, then councillor Lang. Go ahead.
Thank you, Warden, and.
Well, I, I don't think that's a question for the CAO to answer. That's a question for county council to answer. That's when you're saying, is that fair to put that in there? We already have a motion on. Are you asking for, to amend that motion?
Yes, to amend it, to say that this is open to everyone for this clinic, not just to the one Francophone party. And that's what we were talking about here. And I was just wondering if council feels, and if there's anything, is this okay to do this in, in a motion? I was asking the CAO, is this okay to put this in?
Madam CAO?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think that what we'd want to do is want to go back and clarify with the city of Cornwall. I don't believe that there's an urgency for this to get approved this morning. I think the intent of the agreement is to work together. So I think the city of Cornwall will be supportive of what we're proposing. But I think we can also bring it back at our council meeting in December if council would like to defer it. So I think, I think we're all supportive, or everybody's supportive of the same intent of the agreement, and I think the city of Cornwall is as well. So perhaps we could consider the deferral, and then we will bring it back in December and, and provide that update to council.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll go through the questions just so that we're, so councillor Broad.
Yeah, thank you. Just reading through the report, understanding that we're going to take on two thousand clients in SD and G, whether they're Francophone or English, I don't think it matters because it's supporting the entire county. I know for, for ourselves through the. the two clinics we have, you know, people travel from Lees and Grenville, Prescott-Russell, people travel from Lancaster to Morrisburg for that doctor. So having a doctor with, in SDNG, supporting 2,000 residents between Cornwall and, and SDNG clients is, is a support, no matter what, and is supporting us as, you know, if spots become available in, in this location, and folks travel to that location versus Ingleside or South Dundas or the Morrisburg, or Winchester, that's a benefit to all of us. So I think it should be supported at the county level. And I'm okay regardless of the Francophone piece. I think it's as important that we have a new doctor supporting that, in, under contract, that says they need to support 2,000 residents in SDNG in Cornwall.
Thank you, Counselor Broad. It's well spoken. Go ahead, Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The second point that I was thinking of was, are we going to measure the results? Because, again, the projection is that it's going to be 50-50, but will it actually work out that way? Might be an interesting thing to add, whether we can measure that after the fact, because we do want to be sure that, that in fact we get the services. We're hoping we're going to get with, with this. Second of all, yeah, I agree with Counselor Broad. I mean, doc, we need doctors regardless. And if doctors can only speak French, let them come in and serve the Francophone population. And then hopefully we'll get an English one the next time. But again, I think fundamentally, regardless of, of the language that they speak, it will help relieve the, the pressure that we feel in terms of the need for doctors, and the, the patient base will balance itself accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. Counselor Broad stole my thunder there. Because that was my thought, is that I don't care which patients issue it, sir. We have like 60,000 residents. If they take 1,000 of our residents, that's 1,000 less that another doctor needs to do. So it all works out in the end. It doesn't matter to me which ones they take. So I'm, I'm good to go.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to be clear, so is this started in 2020 through just the City of Cornwall? Now it's coming in from 2025 to 2030 to be a joint venture between the city and SDNG? Is this a forgivable medical student loan that we're looking at, like after 2030? Are we done? Is it just this aspect, or this is not going to be an ongoing?
No, I believe we're done, but Peter?
Yes, so this is a forgivable loan, kind of once, one-fifth forgiven every year. The, the doctor didn't start right away, start the family first, so that's why it was delayed a bit from the original dates. But, and just, I guess, just another general one, just, I haven't heard specifically, was only limited to Francophone patients. I did just look at their website, too. It's bilingual, or even classes and programs are offered in English, English and French. There may be some that are targeted in French. Like the overall mission is to provide services for the Francophone community, but there's bilingual services that are, and programs that are offered at the, the center. Just to answer another one of council's questions.
So from what you're saying, if she delayed, so the 150 did not come from the City of Cornwall for the first, starting at the 2020 term? Is that correct on that?
No, the, it's kind of forgiven, so we pay upfront, and then it's, we're paying the City of Cornwall. They're the ones that are doing the funding, so we are...
But in total, are we looking at where she would receive 300,000, is what I'm saying, over that 10-year period, or?
Oh, no, we're half of it. We're half of the amount. Thank you.
Thanks.
No, it's not doubled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Are we prepared to vote? Are we prepared to defer? Those that want to defer, put your hands up. One, two, three, four, five. So we will continue the vote. Are there any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Four, five, six, and I'm in favor, seven. Motion is carried. Thanks, Peter. Moving on to Community Safety Zone Ingleside. Madam Clerk.
It's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Gado, that bylaw number 5471, being a bylaw to designate community safety zones, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Welcome in.
Thank you. So very quickly for council, we had a request through the school, Our Lady of Good Council, or the school board, excuse me, for consideration of a community safety zone in, on kindergarten 14 in Ingleside. Reasonable request that we, at the, at the staff level, looked at, reviewed existing conditions. There is a pedestrian crossing right there, and a lot of the, the schoolchildren that attend the school do cross at that crossing, so an understandable safety request from the school's perspective. There's also Inglewood Court, which is relatively close to it. It's not a protected crossing, but there is a crossing there as well. So we went and met with the OPP to discuss the opportunity of a community safety zone in this area. OPP was very supportive of it and indicated they would, once the signage is installed, would increase enforcement or provide some proactive enforcement to help, help continue to address speeding concerns through this area. Spoke with Public Works Director at South Stormont as well, and they were very much in favor of it, and are looking at similar type of opportunities and options throughout their municipality as well. So from staff's perspective, everything in terms of what we'd want to look for in a community safety zone lines up. One of the things I do note in the report is it may be something that council wants to consider implementing some kind of community safety zone policy, because I can also appreciate there may be some demand for more community safety zones. And quite honestly, there are places where it makes sense to have a community safety zone, places where there isn't. I've heard from a lot of my colleagues in, in the same seat I'm in, that once, there's, there can be a preponderance of community safety zones, and then they start to lose their effectiveness, because they're actually not enforced the way they're intended to be enforced. So I think there's, there's a balance that needs to be struck with community safety zones. I have no, you know, from where I sit and kind of looking at this site itself, I don't see any issues or concerns that this is an appropriate spot for a community safety zone at this point in time. Anyway, I'll, I kind of leave that with council, if they do want to see some kind of policy created. But for today, we're looking at this site and this site alone, and would look forward to council's questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Thank you. Items under the consent agenda? Pardon? Oh, sorry. My apologies. Yeah, lands acquired.
It's moved by Counselor Landry, seconded by Counselor Anibal, that bylaw number 5472, being a bylaw to establish land as part of a highway, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Okay, thank you. Ben? Says it all? Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Now items under the consent agenda.
It's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Dencham, that all items listed under the consent agenda section of the agenda be received for information purposes.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. Moving on to boards and committees. Joint liaison, I believe we did meet. I'm trying to remember. Yes, we did. Do you want to give the report, Deputy Mayor? No. Yeah. Counselor McGillis, you want to give that report?
I think we just, we, we just quickly went through the budgets, and, yeah, we're all sitting here trying to remember what happened at the meeting, but, yeah, Counselor Fraser was the chair of the committee, but, okay, perfect. Moving on to library board. Go ahead, Counselor Broad.
Well, thank you, Warden. And through you, just a few items from the last library board meeting, which was held in the lovely downtown of Williamstown, Ontario. We certainly worked through our 2025 draft budget, so we'll see that next month, what our results are. We updated our policy of Friends of the Library, and we also spent some time discussing some of the outreach programs that we do with some of the hospitals and the hospice areas. So it was nice to see all our libraries involved in public outreach, not only as, as folks that come into the library, but also outreach into the community. So, excellent library morning, and we have another one this week in Morrisburg.
Awesome. Thank you. Police Services Board meeting, coming up. Eastern Ontario Health Unit, coming up. Glen Stordun Lodge, Counselor Broad?
Meeting this week.
Thank you. St. Lawrence River Institute, next week. Raisin South Nation, Source Water, Counselor Bergeron.
Finally, we had a meeting last week.
Oh.
Oh, it was quite the meeting. With, so now they're going to do a salt awareness campaign. As in the past, I mentioned, they have all these new salt regulations as a threat to water. Salt cups, salt cups will be distributed to residents and business owners, so that people know exactly how much weight is in a cup of salt. They'll be posting signage in hardware stores or anywhere where there is road salt sold. Of course, I brought up the question about, so what are the highway people going to do in the wintertime with their salt trucks? Are they going to have a GPS on the salt truck that says, oh, stop putting salt on the road here, and then you can continue later on there? And we got an answer from the Representative Minister of Environment, saying MTO has no intention of doing such a thing, because of concerns over liability for cars slipping and going into the ditch. And then, of course, the question comes, well, okay, we have business owners now, who, they're worried about the same thing. If they can't put so much salt in their parking lot, someone slips and falls, what's going to happen? And, and there's a huge concern about that. So, you know, unless they change the rules about lawsuits, you know, that come about because of salt on driveways or parking lots, this is, I mean, I, I can't understand it. It doesn't make sense. The other thing that came up was climate change preparedness, which nobody's ever thought about. For instance, if there's a severe drought, what's Castleman going to do for water if the Nation River is, you know, half dry, because that's their only source of water? What if there's a huge flood and the dam in Alexandria bursts, and where they take their water now is, is, you know, they can't get it? So there were questions about that, and I don't know if they're going to form some committee provincially to decide what will happen with our source of water in these extreme climate conditions. Another point that came up was that now the oil pipelines, which were not part of a threat before to our water supply, are now considered a threat. But the laws regarding their spills is, is, is not going to be a local one. It's going to be dealt with by the province. And that is it. Our next meeting, I think, is in January.
Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead. Question?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. I have a question. Oh, okay, it's okay. Was there a discussion with respect to using other remedy for parking lots as opposed to salt, sand, or things like that? Any other products?
There was a little bit of talk about that. There was a little bit, but not very much. Some of the comments, of course, for household people is, yes, but then people track sand into the house, or if it's ashes, it, it all tracks in. So I don't know if, you know, ever there will be something else to replace salt. We have, we have no clue at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. Just wondering if there is an issue here with the application on salt on our roadways, if Ben could maybe investigate a little bit further on that, and if, if applicable, bring a report back, if there is going to be any impacts to our county road system.
Okay, yep. He'll do that. Great, thank you. Eastern Ontario Agri-Food Network?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, so there is an interim executive director that stepped into the role since Louis departed. His name is Mark Chenier. And anyway, he'll be there until another individual is hired for the organization.
That's the Mark Chenier we know? Yeah?
What's that?
Is that Mark Chenier?
No, no, no. No, it's not Chenier. It's, okay, sorry.
We just started remembering.
No, it's, no, it's not. It's not him. It's good to see he's back.
Okay.
I'll look up his name. Sorry.
Regional incentives program, no meeting. Rural education?
Yes, thank you, Warden. We have a meeting actually scheduled for September 28th, and we're looking forward to...
September 28th.
September 28th of 2026, sorry. November 28th. Thank you for that correction.
Social Development Council, meeting coming up. SDG Forest Working Group. Counselor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. No meeting, but if I could take 30 seconds just to say that Phil gave me a tour of the Summers Town Forest and the harvest that's going on there. It's been a wonderful fall for them to work in there with the, the dry weather. But I was quite impressed with the amount of ash that had to come out and the little damage that has actually happened. And they're being, the operator seems to be extremely careful and selective at how he takes it out without, you know, you can, usually you wander around after a cut, and it looks terrible for a few years. And it looks actually quite good. They did a very good job, so I was impressed.
Great, thank you. Key information, administration update. Madam CIO.
Thank you, Warden McDonald. So my update is relatively brief. I've provided a few highlights of some of the things that worked on in November, I guess October. We have a couple of upcoming meetings, so just want to remind everybody of some dates. The inaugural meeting is on Friday, December the 13th. We have County Council on December the 16th. Our next County Council meeting in January, January 27th, because of Roma is the week before. And then we have budget meeting dates set aside for December 3rd and December 4th, if the additional day is required. And then I've just put in the dates for the conference. One thing that I wanted to maybe mention, Mr. Warden, is that last week, Mr. Warden, Warden-elect, Lang, and myself met with the City of Cornwall to put forward a joint delegation at the upcoming Roma Conference, that I think is consistent with some of the feedback that we had from our meeting a couple of weeks ago with respect to lack of funding for some of our social service organizations in the area, and, and where people are falling through the cracks or where there's gaps. So the City of Cornwall was certainly receptive to that. So we will be submitting a joint delegation for Roma, and we'll, we'll hopefully be successful in that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that, that meeting went very well, and staff from both municipality, or from both the counties and the City of Cornwall will come back with a little bit of a plan moving forward, and how we're going to attack social services. So it's, it's a good news story. So thank you, Madam CIO. Any questions for the CIO at this point? Okay, seeing none. Ratification bylaw.
It's moved by Counselor Bergeron, seconded by Counselor Anibal, that bylaw number 5473, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. Adjournment by resolution?
Moved by Counselor Landry, seconded by Counselor Anibal, that council adjourn to the call of the Chair.
This will be our last 35-minute meeting after this one. It's Counselor Lang, we all know likes to talk, talk, talk. So, all those in favor of adjournment? Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll go into our committee of the whole. There's some snacks in the back, and so grab something, and we'll get... There's some snacks in the back, and so grab something and we'll get-
Everyone, and we will call this, welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Monday, November 18th. We will call the meeting to order by resolution.
It's moved by councillor Broad, seconded by councillor Landry, that the meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
All those in favour, motion is carried, approval of the agenda.
It's moved by councillor Landry, seconded by councillor Dencham, that the agenda be approved as presented.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favour, motion is carried. Are there any disclosure or pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we will move on to staff reports, 5.1, entrance policies on county roads. Welcome Ben.
Good morning, I hope you're okay being stuck with me for the next two and a half hours as we go through, whoa, whoa, whoa.
You meant forty-five minutes?
Yeah. Yes, alright, so they actually, as the agenda was getting created, I debated which one do I want to actually go with first? And the answer was, I don't think it really mattered because they actually interplay with each other, so it's a good topic that although may seem different from the one side of things, it is actually quite interrelated. So we'll start with the creation of new entrances on county roads, and we'll go from there. So a little bit of background, and this is a topic that the department has presented to various councils through my time here, just to talk about how entrances are created, and I guess really the creation of lots and then the access to county road from those lots. So our job here at the county and the Transportation Department is to build, operate and maintain the region's arterial road network. So what that means, arterial roads, there's different hierarchies and classifications of roadways. We at the county are maintaining the arterial roadways. So generally speaking, arterial roads have higher speeds, they have higher traffic volumes, they are designed to carry greater weights of traffic, so if we can eliminate half-load restrictions, we do. Most of our road network does have half-load restrictions, but the main, the biggest of the roads we look after don't. And to that end, effectively managing the entrances onto our county roads are critical. And the reason that is, that's a fact, is that every access that comes onto a county road is something that will exist pretty much in perpetuity, well after I'm gone, which is many years from now, don't worry. But really, once it's approved, it is something that is permanent. So we have to make sure we are applying appropriate standards, that we are considering the impact of that entrance on the county road, and I can appreciate there's often a discussion around, you know, or a thought, well, it's just, it's just one, and that is fair, because sometimes it is just one, but there is also, it's just one, but how does that one impact the next one that's asked, and so forth, and so forth, and so forth. So how do we actually, at the staff level, excuse me, regulate entrances? And I do want to say, maybe on the outside here too, that ultimately, how staff are regulating access and entrances is all based on bylaws and policies that county council has passed. So ultimately, this group of people is the authority that determines what we are permitting, and if they want, if this authority wants changes to that, they have absolutely every right to make those changes. So the entrance bylaw is really the bylaw that regulates how entrances are permitted and constructed. And so that's how we're dealing with the issues. It was last updated in 2022 by county council, and from staff's perspective, it's working well, the changes we've made have worked well, and there's no issues with that bylaw that require imminent updates. And if I could distill the entrance bylaw into one statement, is essentially, or how we approve entrances into one statement, it's really, any lot that fronts on a county road has a right of access, provided that the location where access is being provided is safe. So any lot that exists today, that fronts on a county road, and a county road alone, has the right of access. So when we talk about entrance spacing and things like that, that doesn't matter from the entrance bylaws perspective, people will get an entrance permit, provided it's a safe location for that entrance to be located. And by and large, because of the design that we employ on our county roads, because they are higher speeds, it means there's greater site distances and whatnot, there are very, I would say, very few locations where safety is a real concern when we're looking at access. Generally speaking, it's curves or hills, but by and large, we have relatively straight, flat roadways, so access from a safety perspective is usually okay. So now, when we're talking about the creation of new lots, and so if you can appreciate, we've talked about, if you have a lot, you can get, you have the right of access onto a county road, so really, when we talk about new entrances, we're talking about, is a new lot allowed to be created? And really, the county official plan, if we are talking about changes and permitting additional entrances onto county roads, we have to go back to the county official plan and start talking about the policies contained in the county official plan. So really, this is all Peter, not me. No, so, you know, the county official plan is a document that's looked, that is, I guess, maintained by the planning department here, so there are some questions that may be asked of council today that we do have to kind of rely on Peter's expertise to guide us through some of those things. But really, the official plan is that, the main policy document that we consider when we're determining if new lots and access onto county roads are feasible, based on the policies that are in there. So what are this, I'm going to give council a very quick summary of those applicable policies. So number one, really what the policy, an overarching theme of that policy is, we are looking to discourage ribbon development and commercial strip development onto county roads. So the question is, what is ribbon development? And I have a screenshot here of a location on a county, this is a county road, where there are sixteen entrances on, or excuse me, fourteen entrances onto a county road within a 600 metre stretch. Not exactly something we desire from the transportation's perspective, the reason why, it does decrease the safety and efficiency of the county road due to the conflict points that are created. Every entrance, you can think of it like a mini intersection, and of course, when we talk about accidents on county road, we're often talking about intersections. So every entrance is an intersection, very low volume, because we're only servicing one property by and large, but it is an intersection that we have to think about the safety, safety and conflict points. There's an increased strain on public services, because there's a greater demand for, what I would say, urban amenities, whenever you have this type of ribbon development. What we often deal with at a staff level is drainage concerns, because there is, generally speaking, as lots get developed, they, you know, the building, the building application to the municipality looks at grading plan for that lot, and then, you know, how is it being managed on that lot, and that lot alone, versus a subdivision. When a subdivision's developed, they look at the grading plan of all of the lots within that subdivision, figure it out. So at the county level, I can tell council, right now, we're dealing with an issue on County Road Two through Glen Walter, where there's some drainage concerns between two lots. It's all on private property, but we have to, we do spend significant time and resources having to deal with that issue, because it is unorganized type of development that has occurred, and we get drawn into the challenges associated with that. And that's, we're happy to do that, that's part of our job, but that, those pressures on staff to help support those issues are much greater when we have areas like this. We have conflict with through traffic, of course, as I mentioned, we're trying to maintain through traffic, we're trying to provide as uninterrupted flow as possible, when you have fourteen entrances within a short period, and if you have all school-aged children that are attending different schools in this stretch, you can imagine school bus stops, garbage stops, if there's parties at some, and parking, and then the challenge with parking and sightlines, so there's, it does create some challenges when we see this. And then, of course, the desire for grading, ditching, sewers, lower speed limits, these are all things that we generally deal with when we're, when there are concerns coming forward from ribbon-developed areas. And I will say, I just quickly looked, like going back to the safety perspective, I didn't get into the accident reports, but just quickly turned on our layer that shows where accidents have occurred, and within this little piece, there was two accidents that were driver-related in this little stretch. So again, I can't say with any certainty that they're-
Sorry, can I interrupt?
Yep.
Councillor Williams has a question.
Thank you, Mr Warden. So what then qualifies as ribbon development? Like where, where does it start and where does it stop?
So ribbon development, actually Peter and I had this discussion as I was preparing this report, the definition of ribbon development, according to the county along a county roadway, is actually based on some of the policies I'm going to talk about next. There is no five entrance, you know, five lots within a 500 metre, it, there is no quantitative number that I could share with council, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, Peter, but like ribbon development is this type of development, but I can't, I couldn't say that, oh, if it's only nine, then it's not ribbon development, now that's fourteen, it is. Like it, there is, it's a, it's a little bit of a nebulous, what is ribbon development? That's not an answer, I'm sorry. I know it's not an answer, I appreciate that, but when I talk about entrance standards, maybe that will help clarify what isn't ribbon development, if that helps. So I want to start, again, talking about the summary of applicable plan, applicable official plan policies. Backing up, we don't want ribbon development. New lots, so whenever we're creating new lots, they, whenever we're looking at a severance application, we do allow it, anytime it's within a boundary of an urban or rural settlement area, that's a no-brainer for us, this is where we want people to develop, this is where our services are. Why would we want to create an impediment for that type of densification and growth in those urban and rural settlement areas? So we absolutely have no issues and continue to support, and hopefully efficiently support, continued lot and growth within rural and urban settlement areas. When we already have lower speed limits, so talking about speed limit reviews and us looking at transitional zones coming into urban and rural settlement areas, as we create those transitional zones, that will actually permit the, make it a little bit easier for people to get severances on the periphery of urban and rural settlement areas. And what does that do? That also, in some ways, and maybe Peter doesn't like to hear that, but it also encourages the growth of those, you know, how do we actually grow those urban and rural settlement area boundaries? Anything that's related to commercial, industrial, institutional or agricultural farm splits have a right of severance with access onto a county road, so we want to encourage that type of development and growth. So we do see that regularly, depending on where that type of growth is occurring. So coming back to the question that was asked, what is ribbon development according to the county? So according to the county on, within the county official plan, I would argue that anytime you have more than three entrances within a kilometre on a road with more than a thousand vehicles per day, or five entrances per kilometre on roads with, with less than five thousand, a thousand vehicles per day, that's ribbon development according to our policies. So this is the target we're trying to reach right now in the policies. That's ideal for us, according to the official plan. So that's not ribbon development, anything more than that is considered ribbon development as on a county road. On local roadways, to my knowledge, there isn't anything in zoning bylaws, but usually like frontage, your minimum frontage is actually kind of set how, what kind of spacing you have with lots, but then you can have minor variances and things like that, so there is no hard and fast rule. Is that, okay, good, I'm getting a nod from the planning department over there, that's great. One thing I do want to mention as well is, we do not allow new residential severances with direct access on county roads that have speed limits of eighty kilometres per hour or greater, and traffic volumes greater than four thousand vehicles per day. So that is, you know, our thirty-ones in our high-volume areas, our county road twos in our high-volume areas, that's where that is prohibited completely for new residential So getting to the engineering basis for restriction, so this is a very common chart you're going to see in a variety of different resources when looking at engineering, access to property versus the type of road that classification we're dealing with. So what this graph is trying to convey to its audience is that, whenever you are looking at your higher-class roadways, so that's your freeway and arterial roadways, you want to, the consideration for maintaining through-traffic movement, through-traffic movement and speed is a greater consideration than access to property. And then, of course, as you get into more of a collector or distributor type of roadway or local roadway, then you're more considering, how do we want to, you know, allow access to property versus maintaining through-traffic and speed? So it's trying to, I guess, illustrate the balance between all of that. Freeways, that's your county, or excuse me, your highway 401s, and like, it makes kind of intuitive sense, yeah, we don't want to have people with direct access on the highway 401, that makes no sense. So they have complete control and complete restrictions on access, and it's all a controlled access through on-ramps and off-ramps, to maintain that free-flow movement of that traffic. Highway 31, which is actually like a secondary highway maintained by the province of Ontario, that's probably laying somewhere in between a freeway and arterial, because there is direct access on the highway 138, but it's hard to get it nowadays, and they would probably stop any type of new development that would occur with access on the highway 138. And why is that? Well, when we talk about some of the challenges we have with safety on highway 138, I can tell you from the design side of passing lanes and whatnot, like you actually can't get in passing lanes if you have all sorts of entrances that are coming onto the roadway. So their ability to even create those passing lanes is really challenging because of accesses that may have occurred in the past. So county, we're operating somewhere between, like in that arterial, down towards the collector-distributor type of road network, and my next report and my next discussion's going to talk a little bit more about that, and what that means within the, within SDNG region as a whole. And then, local municipalities are in that collector-local area where they are thinking about access versus the importance of moving traffic and maintaining higher speeds, higher volumes. So there are a variety of different references that reference the importance of controlling accesses on these arterial type of roadways, so I'll just share with council a couple of those reference points. The National Association of County Engineers, which is a US-based county engineers, essentially association, they have a number of design manuals and guidelines, so, you know, they're, they continue to support kind of what I'm sharing with council right now. Accidents do increase in direct proportion to the number of driveways that are accessing that roadways, and we should, at the county level, be making an effort to eliminate, where we can, the hazards from entering onto the roadway. TAC, which is essentially the penultimate design guideline that's followed throughout all of Canada, it's Transportation Association of Canada, they do in their design guidelines have some guidance with respect to entrances on various roadways. They confirm certainly that arterial roads are supposed to be providing primarily for the movement of traffic, so on that graph, we're up towards more providing movement of traffic versus access. There, we are expected to have an uninterrupted traffic flow, that collisions increase as the frequency of access increases, so, you know, and provides actually some context as to, you know, even though the highway 401 may have, you know, we hear a lot about the accidents that happen on there, when you actually look at the accidents per vehicle compared to other locations, it's actually a relatively safe piece of roadway. TAC also provides some guidance with respect to entrances onto arterial road, rural arterial roads, they suggest even one per 400 metres, which is well, way more restrictive than what the county has right now. And then, they do identify that property access, access should be to a lower-class road, which is something we do have in our driveway bylaw, entrance bylaw as well.
Can I just interrupt?
Absolutely.
Councillor Dencham.
Thank you, Ben, this is really informative. One question, and you mentioned it, in terms of passing lanes or left-turn lanes and things like that, if the idea is to keep traffic flowing, especially on a county road, is there anything within the official plan that allows us to require, depending on the amount of traffic that's expected, both in terms of the amount of traffic on the road, but also the amount of traffic that's expected in terms of turning into or out from a specific property?
Yeah, the answer is absolutely yes. So we do have, within the official plan, policies that do provide us with guidance on the need for traffic studies to support various developments, site triangles, if we need site triangles, road widenings, if we need to actually take a road widening because we don't have whatever our, like our county standard's twenty-six metres total, so usually thirteen metres from the centre line, and the need for, excuse me, turning lanes, left and right turn lanes. So that is absolutely in the official plan.
Go ahead.
Do we have a bit more information that you could share on what, how do we specify that? So if somebody is saying, you know what, I have a new commercial business I'm going to launch, we're expecting to have quite a few trucks coming in and out of here, do we make a decision at that point to specify then, that in order to allow this entrance, you're going to have to as well pay for a left-turn entrance or things like that? Is there, is there some, I didn't, I don't think I saw any of this in the package today, is there anything you can share at a later time with respect to what the criteria is, and how do we actually proactively go about enforcing that or requiring it when an entrance is requested?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to share it. I will say that generally speaking, that happens whenever we are at like site plan or subdivision design stage, because then, often when a lot is created, it's very general in terms of what may be occurring on that lot, like we're going to create a commercial lot for a potential warehouse, that, and that's cool. Once site plan happens, so the developer starts to put their site plan together, understand their square footage, that starts to dictate, okay, it's going to be 10,000 square feet, you know, that means under traffic, you know, there's traffic guidelines, we're going to need to accommodate fifteen commercial trucks per hour, and then they look at background traffic. So we actually only get into the very, like regimented, what the requirements are, further down the line, once we understand what's actually happening on-site. So it's very infrequent where we'd be looking for traffic studies at the, just the creation of the lot. I don't know, but I'd be happy to kind of share with you some of the guidelines we point to whenever we're looking at that.
I have a quick question, just, you know, your previous slide plus this slide talks about collision and fatality rates with full access control, or half of that of rural roads with no access control. Does those, do those stats match in SDNG? Because most of the, when we did a, the last time that we, you know, we got, what were the cause of accidents? You know, ninety percent of accidents seem to be caused by wildlife, and I don't know that those numbers would be supported in SDNG, that an accident is specifically happening coming out of an entrance?
No, that's fair, and I, it's a fair point, and I should make sure I'm clear on that, that, you know, I'm not suggesting we have this dearth of accidents at entrances happening in SDNG, because you're absolutely correct, a majority of our accidents we experience on county roads is a wildlife-related accident, absolutely. So I, and I don't have the statistics, like what that would look like, we'd have to really, our ability to access detailed accident records has been challenging for the last little while, it's something that's, I could talk for an hour about that at some other point, which I'm hearing you don't want to hear at this, today. But I guess, maybe if I could just generalize and say that there is a higher frequency because of entrances, SDNG has very safe roadways. We have, I think we have every right to be proud of the standard we provide to users of our roadways here in SDNG.
Okay, thank you.
So property access, I was on, property access should be to the lower-class road, so that is also within our entrance bylaw, that essentially says, if you have a lot that fronts on both a county road and a local municipal road, your entrance goes to the local municipal roadway. And that's no different than when we have entrance, when we have lots that are at the corner of highway 138 and a county road, as in county road 22, the entrance should come onto the county road, it shouldn't go onto highway 138, that's only, you always go to that lesser classification roadway, and that's a pretty standard engineering principle. Whenever we look at rural collector roadways, which is, again, like what we operate in the arterial to collector spectrum of roadways, the TAC again provides some guidance in terms of access, one access per 400 metres, where some, you may actually go to two, and then the distance between those rural accesses should be 150 metres apart. Again, this is general guidelines for across Canada, that whatever, you know, council is the ultimate authority in terms of what it deems appropriate for the county roads. So getting into, actually, I guess, the, what we want to discuss today, and I would say, SDG, when we look at what we're proud of and what we promote for ourselves, is we have a vision of a rural lifestyle, and that vision is homes situated in spacious, open landscapes, I would suggest, and that type of development is consistent with the engineering principles and kind of those standards we have in our official plan right now. And here's the asterix, I very much appreciate we're in an affordability crisis in this province, and that's creating barriers to find land and build homes, so I appreciate that we have, we have some struggles on the other side of this. And that pressure is on municipalities to improve and increase the ability to provide developable lots in places where people can build homes. But I will always say, we have to, you know, I'll always recommend that we have to maintain some form of control for the county roads, we don't want it to be just unrestricted development along the county roadway, but I also, I think I, not I think, I am very understanding that there is some pressure and affordability challenges within all of Ontario, including SDNG, and it's well worth having a discussion if the entrance policies we have with the, on county roads, is appropriate for what we do. So what, if, and I trust you've gone through the report, I'll quickly summarize options that, if council's looking for some changes to those policies, what those options may be. So option number one is to actually get in and update the official plan policies for entrances onto county roads. So from staff's perspective, what I would recommend council consider is maintaining the following principles, one, that there is no restrictions on the creation of new lots fronting on county roads within settlement areas. That just makes sense, I think it's consistent with what the province wants, it's consistent with what we want within our communities, and it just makes total sense. So we want to continue to allow that type of access and that type of lot creation within our rural and urban settlement areas. I also think it's important not to have any restrictions on the creation of commercial lots, farm splits, those types of things, because that really fosters economic growth and development within our region. I have no issues with the creation of new lots whenever speed limits are appropriate, because it does, you have slower speeds, better reaction time, more of a expectation that the flow would be interrupted in a lower-speed area. And I do, I do support the idea that we are not creating new residential lots whenever we have high speeds and high traffic volumes, because those are the areas, I can tell you right now, when I started here at the county, there was discussion about four-laning county road 31 going into Ottawa, if you can believe that. And traffic volumes have only gotten greater since that time, so not on the radar, just for the, for the record, for anybody listening, it's not on the radar, but it is something that we have to kind of think about as the future, you know, that we want to protect these high-volume, high-speed roadways to ensure that we're not creating a situation where thirty years down the road, we can't actually implement passing lanes, as an example, because we've allowed access to be, to go on in a way that doesn't foster that type of, that type of road improvement. So if council's looking for increased flexibility with respect to entrance policies in the official plan, what, I won't read the existing, but what the potential change that council could consider is, when the number of existing or future entrances, excluding field entrances, is less than six per kilometre, so allowing actually up to six per kilometre on county roadways, and forgetting the 1,000, you know, below 1,000 versus above 1,000. And then also include a little, a little piece about, county roads identified as desirable local roadways, the local municipality actually has the authority to determine if access would be permitted. And that will, we'll have a little bit more of a discussion on what that means, based on my next presentation, but the idea that if council is giving direction with potential jurisdictional transfers between roadways, if there is a, I guess, a commitment for a jurisdictional transfer from a county road to a local road, even if it's not happening today, tomorrow or next year, how we treat severances on that roadway is treated based on how a local municipality would treat it, not how the county would treat it. on how a local municipality would treat it, not how the county would treat it. So what does the impact of that?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Just a question for you. On your option one, if, if we were to choose option one, did you guys perform a inventory of how many additional driveways or additional dwellings could be accommodated with this option?
So we, I can give the theoretical is what I can provide council, the theoretical additional, but I can't, like, I'll, my next slide. And it's not, not an absolute number, but it's actually like, so what this means for, for the impact of the change, for roads between 1,000 to 4,000 vehicles per day, which is actually a majority of the roads that the county owns and maintains, the number of permitted entrances would effectively double from three to six. So if there is an ability to, if, if there is, if six entrances don't exist there already, you can go up to six. Roads with less than 1,000 vehicles per day, we're already at five entrances per kilometer. Essentially, it just moves up one additional entrance. And from staff's perspective, then you, we get out of the, it's always a challenge when we're looking at, looking at severances, because if we're in that 989 cars per day versus 1,005 cars per day, like it, it always is challenging, because you will see year over year, some of the traffic volumes do fluctuate. So I've always felt like that 1,000 cars per day is a very absolute number that perhaps isn't fair. And, and just think of the county roads as county roads, and let's, you know, we, we worry about the ones that are high and not worry so much about the, the volumes that are 0 to 4,000 cars per day. So yeah, so as I said, anything between 1,000 and 4,000, which is a majority of our road network, the permitted entrances would double if they are permitted. 1,000 would allow additional one, and then any roads that county council deems appropriate to be transferred to local municipalities at some point in the given future would not be subject to county road access restrictions. So that's option one. So I know it's not 15,000 more homes, which I think is what you're
Sorry, just, yeah, I guess that's what I was just trying to get a feel of. But we're only talking 100 new entrances or 100 new dwellings through SD and G, or we talking potentially 500 new ones? And I know, I know it's a guesstimate, because you don't know what the severances, you don't know if you're going to have two or three severances, somebody may want to do something a little different, multifamily and all that good stuff. But I'm just trying to get a feel of what we're really actually talking about in terms of additional inventory or additional dwellings.
So I don't have that answer, and it would take months of work to get that answer is the, is the challenge, because there is so many different number of accesses that exist out there, and the exercise is quite challenging. And I will kind of touch on it. My last slide will touch on kind of future opportunities, which is essentially what you're, what you're, what you're getting at, Councillor St Pierre. So option two, so this is an option that, so in lieu of actually changing the policies and making a policy change, option two could be another, another type of policy update, but essentially to allow applicants to give, to come to county council and request a variance. That is something that county council may prefer, because it gives this body an opportunity to author, the authority to exercise their judgment on various requests based on various circumstances. From staff's perspective, I can see that there's some challenges there, as it may create some inequity in decisions or pressure for applicants to bring variances forward. And, and really, when we look at this opportunity from staff's perspective, like when we are creating new lots, the new lots should be expected to meet a current standard. So I don't think it's unreasonable that, that we ask that of new lots to, to, to actually meet a standard. It's not like this is something that existed and we're trying to grandfather it into a new policy. It's, here's what the policy is, you should apply with that policy, because there's good reason for that policy. And the other challenge with this, from staff's perspective, it does put the ability to make a decision in accordance, in accordance with the Planning Act at risk, because if, if, if there is a request to come to council, and depending on council meetings and timelines under the Planning Act, there may be some challenges actually meeting some timelines. So it's not, not really an approach that staff would recommend council entertain, but ultimately, again, council is the, the authority on this, and, and we will, we'll take direction from council, depending on where they want, or we will take direction from council. Option number three, which is really not, it's, it's no change. So we actually maintain the current policies as they are right now. There is avenues for applicants to resolve or potentially resolve unfavorable positions or decisions that, that they face under the current policies. Right now, applicants can undertake an official plan amendment if they want to provide an argument and rationale for why the policies as they are written right now are not, don't make sense in their circumstance. That's the whole reason for official plan amendments. They can also appeal decisions. But of course, both of those processes are costly, time-consuming, and at risk of not being, not being favorable. We can mitigate some of the cost if council wants to look at some kind of revised OPA fee schedule for entrance policy amendments, that could be done. But again, not necessarily the most efficient and effective way to deal with this. But it is a way, and it's a way that exists today. So those are kind of the three options I've put in my report. I know in terms of future opportunities, and this is something to Councillor St Pierre's point, you know, what do the policy changes mean? Well, it's, it's different every location, and hey, I picked South Dundas in this picture by pure coincidence. But, you know, as an example, on County Road 28, and I've highlighted like green and red where very, very, and this is very, very quickly, like what I would love to be able to provide applicants is this type of map for every county road across SD and G, is where our severance is possible, based on whatever policy direction we take versus where it's not possible, just to have a better understanding of where development can occur. This exercise is incredibly, like every act, every severance that comes across Transportation's desk is, we go through this, this exact analysis for every location where a severance occurs, you know, how many entrances are within that kilometer, does it meet the policies? And I do want to say, like, the local municipal planning staff and the county planning staff do a great job of helping to, before people spend a lot of money on severances, we kind of go through things informally, and we have a pre-severance process where we actually, it's a small, a very small fee that we charge people to actually go through and do this exercise for them, so they understand if access would be possible, because it is, again, it's, it's an exercise that we have to go through for every severance we look at. And then we actually reimburse them that fee if they continue on through the severance process. So it's at no extra net cost if they're going through the severance, but it does allow people to kind of, as, as a quick exit ramp through it. But I would love to do this, but this is a, a pretty significant undertaking that we just don't have the staff resources to do at the present time. So with that, I will absolutely love to
Okay, thank you, Ben, for that presentation. Very well done. Councillor McGillis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and thank you for your report. I just want to say that I appreciate you saying what the pressures municipalities are facing too, with the amount of requests for, for homes to be built in our communities. The government introduced Bill 185, and that was to cut red tape and also to build more homes, lower development charges, land use planning framework with the intent to removing barriers, as you said, to build 1.5 million homes by 2031. We know that's probably overreaching, but we have to look at different ways, and I'm glad that we come up with some options here to find that we're, to allow more building or more access to the county roads. You know, if we do change the, the speed limits in the kilometers, because you're saying anything under 60 kilometers an hour is allowable and anything over is not, I mean, we can control our road safety with the, with, with our road signage. So we have, we can, there's one option we can look at right there, so to allow more homes built. Two to three houses right now are allowed to be built on existing lots, if you have the room and the services provide, or provide it to some places where it's outside subdivisions. But there's a lot of homes that are, they're going to be private systems, and, and they will be able to access even the same systems that are existing, so they can build one or two homes extra on their, on their existing lots. Now, I was approached by, you know, quite a few different people in the municipality of South Durhammont, saying that they were refused the opportunity to build a home on a piece of, a parcel of property that they own adjacent to their existing property, even when they said that, you know, they offered to use the same existing driveway. So to me, using, giving them an opportunity to build another house and using the existing driveway would be no different than somebody building an extra house on existing properties, which we're allowed to do under the provincial rules now. So that kind of is contradicting to me. And I think we have to really seriously look at more options that are not so restrictive right now. Right now, even with the options you provided, I think they're still over restrictive. And I think that we have to look at more ways of finding opportunities for more houses to be built. I mean, like, I think a lot of that has to do with the pricing houses. The price of houses are expensive because they're lacking the opportunity to build homes too as well. We're running out of room for subdivisions. Municipalities can't provide more housing because of water and wastewater capacities. So there's another thing that's a barrier for municipalities. I know there's different municipalities within SD and G are having the same problem. We are at the same problem too, until we are able to upgrade our, our water and wastewater. And I think that, you know, when you got somebody that's requesting to build a house that's near, coming up towards a stop sign on County Road 18, and they want to build two houses and offering using the same driveway, I, I don't understand why they were refused. So that's just one example. But there's, there's places in SDG where there's houses within one kilometer that you were saying that's over, that's under the 60, but they're over the 60 speed limit, and there's many houses built in that area without any accidents. And I think some people could come up with an example today regarding what's going on in their municipality. But I think that we have to seriously look at making changes here where, where we can make the difference in this community for housing, because we are, we are being restrained in terms of the amount of houses that we're allowed to build. We have to open it up more, Ben. That's what I'm looking at. That's why I was, you know, for years asking for the changes that we should be making, systemic improvements for more housing in our communities. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Just to Councillor McGillis's point, I'm not clear on what the thoughts are on shared driveways.
So right now, our entrance by law does not allow shared driveways. I think our experience is that whenever that, so it had previously, actually, I think that was a change we made in 2022, if I remember correctly, I might have my, it might have been a previous iteration of it. But one of the challenges we have seen with shared driveways, when it's shared between two distinct property owners, two distinct, excuse me, two distinct properties, is that I think the, the adage, good fences make good neighbors is, is quite, we've, we've seen a lot of conflict as a result of shared driveways. So that has been something that we have moved away from, and we've also, whenever people have been, I guess, like, have been, when those lots were created under the regimen of allowing shared driveways to create additional entry, access, or excuse me, to create additional lots, council has, in my experience, anytime someone's come forward and said like, look, if this isn't working, we want to have our own separate entrance, council's been favorable to that. So, so I, I guess I would not encourage, like, I would not encourage shared driveways between two distinct properties, so different title, different conveyance, because there's a complicating factor with that shared entrance. There are circumstances where it does make sense, and the easiest one I could describe to council is if you have commercial development in many locations, you don't want to have, like, like a strip mall as an example, like you don't want to have 10 different entrances, you want people to work together and come out with a common entrance, because then you probably have to signalize it, blah, 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 blah. So there are instances absolutely where shared entrance does make sense, and so there is a little bit of flexibility in the entrance by law. But the entrance by law essentially stays away from shared entrances between two different property owners. In a circumstance where someone's building a secondary dwelling on their property, so that's, I have a house, and then I have a small, a tiny home for my young child or my elderly aging parent, that, like, there's, there's no, like, that, there's no issue with being able to continue to use that, the existing entrance. So that's, we don't see, it's not a shared entrance, because it's only one property. So there, there is a distinction there. Does, does that answer your question?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councillor St Pierre.
Thank you, Warden. And I just want to get clarification again on the speed zones, because I, I was under the impression we were changing some, some transitional speed zones to encourage, to kind of encourage ribbon development. So is that, that in fact, so if I'm going 80 and there's a transition to 70 to 60, can ribbon development occur within that 80 to 70, 70 to 60 zone?
It would be more the 70, 60 where that would be permitted, not the, so, under 80 is where there's a little more flexibility in the policies to allow ribbon development. And, and yes, we are, we've got essentially the draft changes for transitional zones into settlement areas. I've got that, that draft by law report on my desk. Not going to lie, budget's been a priority over the last little while, so just haven't been able to kind of go through it one last time to be able to present to council. My expectation would be early in the new year when we bring that forward to council. So even under the existing policies right now, some of those changes in the speed limit by law will allow some, some additional development on the periphery of existing settlement areas. Is that?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I think, for the sake of giving some feedback, I guess, from North Durhamont's perspective, and I guess I can really only speak to that, we have lots of room in our settlement areas and around right now. I, I kind of like the fact that we're trying to keep the, the county roads moving. So from my perspective, I, I tend to prefer, and I'm not speaking for all the other municipalities who may have very different challenges than we do. But I, I kind of like the status quo, with the exception of if we can find some ways to improve the administration, make it more cost-effective, make it faster, et cetera, et cetera, that, that's fine. But like I say, from our perspective, we've, we've got room to grow. It's a great place to grow. And so, again, from our perspective, and I don't speak for the mayor either, I'm speaking for myself, I think the status quo, with the exception of potentially finding some improvements on the administrative side.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Thanks, Ben, for the presentation. It's always good to look at the other side, eh? And, and I can see where you're coming from as far as, you know, staff's perspective, it, it would be a lot simpler. But I do think there is another side. We all know where there's certain ribbon development in our areas and on county roads. And I would venture to say that the people that live there feel that they have maybe even a better quality or higher lifestyle than people that may be in some of our settlement areas. And if you look at the price of houses in those areas, they sell reasonably well. If you want an acre, or an acre and a half, or two acres, and you've got a pretty nice spot there. And so there is pluses to it, and we all drive by them every day. I think of, on myself, on the way to Williamstown, drive by, there was definitely likely seven or eight per kilometer, and very, very seldom I ever drive by and somebody's actually pulling out of their driveway. I mean, nowadays, people go out their driveway to go to work in the morning, they come back in the evening, and then maybe go out again after supper to take the kids to soccer or something like this, you know, it's, it's not a high volume of traffic coming out these entrances. So I do think that maybe we can find somewhere, and I don't think we should open it wide open for, by any stretch. I do like the idea of maybe, you know, doubling to six as a start. I wondered about combining the two, or you double the sticks, but then it gives, give the person an option to maybe, you know, if there's circumstances that may be warranted, it comes, but I just, I worry a little bit about how many meetings we're going to have if they're all come to. But, but I'm not sure, like, we talked, you were talking here about giving two roads back in the next presentation, giving two roads back to the township. So I went on the, the, the website, or not the website, but the GIS thing there. Both of those roads we're time of giving back is all ag land on both sides, so there's not going to be any severances. So we have to take that, all that ag land comes right out of it. There's no severance is going to be allowed there unless it's a splitting of a farm, but there's not going to be any residential lots put in any of those. So that eliminates like two-thirds of our township right there, that we don't have to even worry about this. So anyway, I guess where I'm at at the moment, I'm interested is here, what other people say, is I'm curious what everybody else is thinking, but I would like to, like to at least see us expanded a certain amount. When I travel from my place to Williamstown, and I know there's seven to eight entrances there in a kilometer, it does not seem busy. It does not seem too bad. Now, I know County Road 17 is a bit of a slower road. That's why you're considering sending it back to us, but anyway, we'll talk about that in the next presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. I'll just give my reasons. I'm probably similar to Mr. Dencham, or Counselor Dencham, with the status quo. The affordability crisis. Rural lots tend to be expensive. Urban lots tend to be less expensive. So I never, like, I see that as a reason, but not one that I prescribe to. I find the reason we have an affordability crisis is mostly, you see conglomerates buying doors, as they say in the real estate market, you know, there's not as many mom and pops. So whenever your conglomerates are like retained earnings income trusts typically are maximized profit. So that's what we're seeing a little bit too. And on a macro level, I think Canada had 500,000 net immigration, which does put a strain on housing stock, because it's just a numbers thing that way. We actually have the highest rate per population in the world for immigration. So, I mean, we might build 80 houses here, but we're not solving that crisis that way. And then anecdotally, and my experience is a little different, my driving experience is the same as Counselor Lang's in that, like, County Road 17, I'm one of the doors he might pass, but I'm on the Hamlet side of it, not the other side of the track, so to speak. Whenever knocking on doors, anecdotally, County Road 18 and two, which would be, like, County Road two in our township is very ribbon developed. Anytime I knock on the door and talk to somebody, they insisted that I back around and then drive out because they found it unsafe. I'd probably say 80 to 90% of people are not. So the people who live on those roads tend to find it not safe because it is an 80 kilometer road. Now, I agree, like, County Road 17, we're going to have that conversation, and it is a slower road. So I'm in favor of option three because of those several arguments.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments at this point? Because I'll give my opinions at this point. So I'm along the lines of Counselor Lang. I think that there needs to be some kind of change. The amount of times that people come out of entrances is, again, two to three times a day. It's not, I don't think it's taxing the county road. A lot of our, a lot of these places, and I'll use County Road 10, is that the one that you were referencing up on the screen with 14 entrances? Because it's more excessive for 500 meters on County Road 10 just outside of Alexandria, and it's an 80 zone. So, and I'm not aware of any accidents in that 500 meter stretch. My point is, I don't want that kind of ribbon development, but I think there's room for more development on these roads. It's, we get these requests all the time, and generally, it's someone ends up going to the mayor and saying, you know, what the heck, you know, why can't I get? And you go look at it and you go, geez, you know, this seems logical to put something here. And I know, and, you know, we talked about County Road two. Well, County Road two has nothing to do with SDG, as that was a, you know, it was a provincial highway. And those were all those little, these big houses were little shanties back in the day. And, you know, that's not a problem that we inherited, that problem. So I look, you know, I look forward to maybe us expanding a little bit. Again, not, you know, not allowing it to open it up, but just seeing some expansion upon it, so. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Go ahead.
Counselor Landry.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. So are we looking at two, so we're talking all about entrances. But the entrances and looking at development, people wanting to go to the rural. Most of our county roads face onto, as Counselor Lang mentioned, ag properties that, and Peter can maybe elaborate on that, most of the farms have already occupied the maximum of two so that they can't, unless you're in a rural zone, which will allow the third severance. So it's more of a severance thing and not so much, here, we're talking about entrances. But if you can't get consent on a severance, well, you're not looking at an entrance. Am I correct on that? So if you go from three to six, are we talking about only new severances application that do get consent? Then we add, or are we talking about somebody wanting an additional covert to their property not pertaining so much to, towards a new severance?
So this is, so I guess like, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg. And that's the challenge of this discussion, is the, we're talking about the egg or is it the chicken? Because it's the creation of the new lot. Once a lot is there, they have the right of access onto a county roadway. So where does that all start? It's in the severance. So for us, essentially, what we are doing is we are, how we actually evaluate whether a new severance can happen is instead of looking at three, like, okay, is there one, two, okay, we have room for the third. Now we're going one, two, three, four, five. Okay, good, there is room for one more, six. So now we can allow that severance to occur. Like, that's very, very kind of high level, quickly, that's how, that's the making of the sausage. And so that's, we're changing that standard from three to six. Whenever we're looking at somebody wanting to put in a new lot. If there's only five entrances, they want a new lot, guess what? You get six because you got that kilometer. And that's how it works.
Go ahead.
So if I'm clear, so what you're saying is, so there was severances that would not get consent due to that it followed your official plan entrance aspect. So if you do increase, never mind the agricultural maximum lots, you're saying if they were able to get their lot regardless if it was rural, and the province now has stated that you can get a third severance on your property. If our entrance bylaw stated that you couldn't, that's what we're looking at, is to increase it for not so much for an entrance, we're increasing it for severances only, correct?
Yeah, correct. So whenever the transportation looks at a severance, we don't look at the official plan designation. It's not, we don't look at, oh, this is ag, this is rural, this is, like, we'll look at a settlement area because if we see it in a settlement area, we're like, okay, perfect, this is where we want it. We look at the speed limit, and if it's a lower speed limit, then we go, okay, there's an opportunity here. But we don't look at the official plan designation. That's more of a planning consideration under the provincial plan policies rather than a transportation consideration under what is ribbon development according to our official plan on county roadways.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lang.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and through you. Yeah, just to add on to Counselor Landry's, that there are people that are applying, because we just expanded our severance policy, that you can now get two additional severances on rural properties as of the beginning of this year. It was back in the 80s or whatever it was. So there are people that are looking for those two severances, and they're, I'm getting calls and they're saying, they're not allowing me to have a severance because they won't give me an entrance. And that's what's happening. So we've opened it up where we want more severances. We've said we want more severances on rural properties. But we're, we've said that, but we're not allowing them to get them in some cases. Some cases, it's fine, but it just, people are a little frustrated that they have a rural property. They are allowed to have severance, except they're not going to be allowed to have an entrance, so the severance is denied. We're just wondering if we should open that up a bit more.
Go ahead, Ben.
And if I may, and don't forget that those policies also apply on local municipal roadways. So the, where a local municipality would probably be more inclined for ribbon development. And I'm not disputing what you're saying, and I respect, and that's why we're having this discussion, because I appreciate the desire for additional opportunity. But those additional severances also apply on local roadways where there shouldn't be as many restrictions, and rightfully so, like, we're, and that's the balance we're trying to find in this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McGillis, then Counselor Williams. Oh, did you have a subsequent? Go ahead.
Yeah, it just depends on the property that the individual looking for the severance owns. If he happens to be on a rural road, he's got a lot better chance. But some of the people that would like to sever happen to be on county roads, and that's their lot in life at this point.
Counselor McGillis.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Lang with respect to agricultural properties and lands that are specific wetlands, things like that, limit the opportunity to build. The thing is, say that we open it up to six, six developments, which is allowed within a kilometer range roadway. Is it a first come, first served? Say that you have seven that apply for it at the same time. How do we make that difference?
It's a fantastic point. That's the system that exists today. It's first come, first served, like, to be honest with you. Like, that's, if there's room for one more entrance, they get it. And if the neighbor's like, oh, I want a severance too, well, all of a sudden now, sorry. And that's, that is a challenge. You're 100% correct, and it's.
Just going to have to take your auction course and we'll just auction off who gets it.
Subsequent question?
And another thing too, I always want to mention, just from what Counselor Landry said, it was in terms of lots of agriculture on county roads. But the northern municipalities, North Dundas, you know, North Glengarry, North Darmont, there was a lot more agricultural properties there than in the south municipalities. So southern municipalities, I would say, would have more opportunities because of that reason, to have opportunity to build more homes. So it's just a difference.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Do you have any idea, excuse me, how many severances have been, excuse me, not approved because of the entrance issue in the last year?
So, and this is very anecdotally, an anecdotal answer on that one. And so what I don't know is how many go to a local municipal office, work with the planning staff, and I never hear about it because they actually provide some very, like, sound guidance and advice based on what they see in their past experience. But I would suggest if we hear of, like, from, when we're doing official pre-severance comments, if there's six a year that we have to say no to, that's about it. Would that seem fair, Peter?
Yeah, through the word, yeah. I was just going to add, most people are, pretty much every person, they'll hear back from the transportation department. They never end up actually putting in an application. They've spent the money for the pre-severance, and that's it. So in terms of actually refusing an application, I think there's only been, and maybe in the last 10 years, one that actually went to OLT that was refused, and then they appealed, and the county was successful defending its council's official plan policies. But most people would be probably, yeah, the, let's say, Ben, the six per year that they get the preliminary comments, and they decide not to apply. So the people that are turned down, they generally, they want to save their money, so they don't put an application in after that.
Okay, final comment?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. That said, I know there's two different individuals who are looking to build beside this other individual. He wants to put those two houses, and he wants to use the existing driveway. The other two didn't even ask for the opportunity to build because they know that he was turned down. So that eliminated the opportunity for more people to ask for severances.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so it looks like we have kind of two options, a status quo or increasing it. I mean, the suggestion was three to six. Is that three to six? So I'm just looking for who's interested in sticking with the status quo. Two. Who's interested in moving it from three to six? Okay, so I think that's your direction.
Perfect. So just from, so for council's information, and I think we'll take direction, because it's actually Peter that has to do the work now, not me. But I know he was contemplating or working through a housekeeping official plan amendment at some point in early Q2 of next year. If that's too lengthy, I don't want to speak for Peter. There may be opportunity to advance something a little sooner. But I think that from a timing horizon, that's where we are right now. So maybe, if, through you, Mr. Warden?
That works for you?
Yes, and also depending on the decision for the next report too, because that could factor into which roads are permitted entrances.
Right, right. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, that value-added feature, I would like to support that too, because that's a future opportunity is when staff resources are allowed. I like that idea, the green line, red line for our planning departments to, in addition to the three to six as we're green.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McGillis.
There was discussion about using shared driveways, Mr. Warden. I was just wondering, is there a flavor around the table to change that policy too?
I would agree with the transportation department on that, that if it's on the same, this again, my opinion, if it's on the same lot, or if it's the same, that I would allow it. But I don't know if we want to separate lots that are owned by separate people. I'm just, and I'll use my real estate side on this. I've had to, probably in my career, five or six times with shared driveways, that we've had to really get, it's difficult. Yeah, very complicated. So I don't know, what's everybody else think of that? Go ahead, Counselor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. I'm hopeful that increasing to six is going to solve some of those issues. Because I do, you know, what works out good for the first owners usually, because they're in agreement. But it's the next, when they sell the place, that the next one, who pays for what? And there's no removal, and they want the puddles fixed, and the other guy doesn't want to buy gravel and whatever, you know.
That sounds like you're complaining about your road that the county, that township wants to get back to you. Go ahead, Counselor St. Pierre.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. I was just going to say I support yours and Counselor Lang's approach on that one. I think getting into maintenance, operation, maintenance agreements between owners on driveways, I think that just makes it way too messy.
Thank you. Counselor Berger.
Thank you, Warden. I agree. If it's separate lots, there will be arguments. But for instance, in South Mountain, as I don't know, one of you pointed out, it's a family and you have an adult child, and they can't afford a home. And so they've decided to put a small or a tiny house on the same property. That's okay for a shared driveway, but if it's separate people, no, that just causes conflict.
Okay, so I think you've got enough guidance. Thank you for that. And you've got exactly four and a half minutes to get the next report done. By the way, just, if any of the road supers have any questions over there, just throw your hand up, no problem. So, except for you, Tim. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And I know I've seen a couple texts go through of some of the, all the road supers were invited to attend. They all participated, and that's a great part to start off this presentation. This is a long time in coming, and I appreciate council's patience. It was hard to get this to the top of the list on the big list of things to do. So it's been something we've been working on for a long, long time with great participation and support from our local public works directors. I do want to specifically thank Tim, Sarah, and Derek for their help authoring. There's, not only did we have some great, I guess, workshops, if I could call it that, but we also had, with their help, putting this report together. So you've got, council's got a draft report in front of you. And so what I'll do is I'll do a high-level review of what that report, you know, how we got to where we are, and then really look to council in terms of what our next directions are, because it's, it's up to you folks. So what does this report mean? And as I was preparing for this presentation this morning, I thought, you know what? A great way to start it is just say, it really means nothing, to be honest with you. It really means nothing because it's the 12 people around this table that determine what the county road system is in SDG. If we felt like we wanted to be spiteful towards Counselor St. Pierre because he was sticking his tongue out at us, we could make some determinations in South Dundas, and county council could get rid of every county road in South Dundas, and it would be the local municipalities' responsibility.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Really, that's the power that county council has. They're the ones that determine what the county road system is within SDG, and then by default, what the local road system is within SDG. So, yeah, if you want to do that, let's go ahead and do that. I can have stuff ready. But really, at the end of the day, what this is all about is trying to get a best understanding of what, I guess it's really to make sure that the roads within our region are receiving the appropriate level of service and are under the jurisdiction of the appropriate responsibility. Collectively within SDG and including provincial highways, we have more than 3,000 kilometers of roads that we all collectively look after. And so this is a big asset. This is a big consideration that we need to have and a great discussion to have around this table. So the study itself, this is coming up, right? Yes, good. So we went through a multi-phase approach when we did this study. And how it really started was we identified essentially 20 roads within the region that we felt needed to have a little bit of an additional assessment, whether it was an appropriate road or not. So phase, and I'll explain it as we go through. Phase one of this study was actually just going through, there's a county road criteria that had been established by the Ontario Good Roads Association. And it was very much a desktop exercise in assigning points to a roadway based on kind of different things it was doing. And we determined as a group that any road that had six or more is deemed to be serving a regional purpose within the context of our road network. So we've talked with council about this previously, but, you know, very quickly, you know, there's things like, is there heavy industrial? What's the speed limit? What's the road surface like, traffic volumes? All those are weighted whenever we were scoring roads in phase one. So map, and the maps in the report. So map, and the maps in the report that council has looks at all the roads that we studied. And we, after we scored it all, you know, we could have stopped there and said, okay, here we go, council. Here's what the, the study found and we're done. Tell us what to do. But the reality was, and we had some really in-depth discussions, we said, well, that's good. Like we have a good understanding of what those scores were. But for some of these roads, these scores actually don't make sense in the context of what that road is doing. Like there's, there's more to a road than just going through and scoring it. There's more to it. We have to actually have a little bit of a deeper dive into the roadway and what it's doing. So that led us to, yeah, so really it didn't feel right. The scores that we saw didn't feel right in the context of the roadway. So what we did then is we went into phase two of this study, which is actually trying to define what the road functionality is. And you heard me talking about these terms in my last presentation, is what's a local roadway within SDNG? What's a collector roadway within SDNG? And what's an arterial roadway in SDNG? So the group, we all sat through and kind of, we created these definitions without actually thinking of very specific roadways. We created, you know, these definitions and a lot of reference material out there to help guide us. And you know, things as an example is promoting commercial and economic growth. What road classification is it? Is it less than or equal to a class four? That's, that's really an arterial roadway. So the higher, the lower the class number, the more volume of traffic is on that roadway. So we want to, you know, on the county road system, like we shouldn't be looking after class six roadways. It doesn't make sense. But local roadways, absolutely a class six roadway. You probably have lots of them in your road network. So there's all sorts of definitions that we created because what we wanted to do is then take these roads where we said, after we went through the scoring of the 20, got rid of a bunch of them, and then we said, these roads, let's have a little bit of a better review of this to make sure we feel comfortable, whatever our recommendations may be. Made these definitions and then we started to evaluate those roadways based on what we learned in the criteria and the definitions. So that's where the recommendations are flowing from, from County Council. So I'll just briefly kind of go over each roadway that we did the in-depth study on. So first one to talk about is County Road 26. What's going on here? Sorry. County Road 26. So that's what County Road 26 looks like from a cross-sectional perspective. Where, sorry, my apologies. County Road 26 is in South Glengarry. It only scored a 2.5 whenever we used all those criteria that we talked about before. 26 does meet the criteria as a local roadway. There's less than 500 cars a day on that roadway. Has a very discontinuous alignment, so there's a lot of jag, jigs and jags on that roadway where it connects with local roads. So, and there are close proximity of other county roads within, within the County Road 26. So County Road 34, County Road 23 are very close to County Road 26. And both 34 and 23 connect to existing settlement areas. So ultimately, the conclusion we came to as a committee was that County Road 26 met the definition as a class, for a classification as a local roadway. Next roadway we looked at was County Road 40. This is in South Dundas. Again, very low score, had low traffic volumes. There are reduced speeds on this roadway. Primary function of this roadway is property access. And some of the challenges, and we just talked about these entrance challenges, you know, development opportunities can be restricted because it is a county roadway. So if the primary consideration of this roadway is property access, but we're treating it as a county roadway, subject to those county road requirements, it does create some, some, I guess handcuffs on this roadway to develop and grow. Next road we looked at was County Road 17 in South Glengarry. So it scored a 5.5. So it actually almost, from that phase one analysis, almost met that criteria as a county roadway. The current design standards don't meet county, county, excuse me, the current design does not meet county design standards. There are reduced speed limits along that roadway. There are alternative county road connections available. So again, our conclusion after we went through this analysis and looked at the definitions is that it does meet the criteria for a classification as a local road. Headline Road, and this is again, an example of kind of an interesting conclusion that came out of our analysis. So this is the piece of, of road that connects from Highway 138 to County Road 33, Power Dam. So it scored 11.5. So actually that scored one of the highest scores of all the roads we looked at within this study. But ultimately, at the end of it, our committee determined that the jurisdiction was deemed appropriate for that roadway. So it is a local roadway. Our, our conclusions were, it probably should stay as a local roadway. Why do we say that? It does have a reduced speed limit. There is significant residential development along the entirety of that section. It does have commercial restrictions, so there is no heavy truck traffic permitted on that roadway. And if it was a county roadway, it would not benefit from future development, or it would be subject to future development restrictions. So the ability to further develop that roadway would be restricted if it was a county road. So although it actually scored very high in the phase one, ultimate determination was that it probably made sense to continue on as, as a local roadway rather than a county roadway. South Service Road was another road we looked at. Again, a road that scored at a county road, like higher than six. It was a nine and a half. But we, we again concluded as a committee that the existing classification was appropriate. Why did we get to there? You know, it is providing a barrier service to Highway 401, so that does provide some, I guess, points towards it. But ultimately, we actually have County Road 2, which is on the north side of Highway 401, providing the service that is demanded of the county road network on that side. So we, we did say, if County Road 2 wasn't a county roadway, it absolutely would have been a candidate for reclassification. And if we considered it as a county road, again, we'd have some challenges from future development where there'd be restrictions that wouldn't benefit the community as a whole. Tyotown Ray Road, another road we looked at, and again, another local roadway that scored very high, but where ultimately the committee felt like the existing classification was, was appropriate for that road as a road looked after by the Township of South Glengarry. The road is heavily developed. Here's an example. Had development restrictions been in place, that might be something where the county would, it would make sense as a county roadway. Does have reduced speed limits and similar to other ones where there may be some restrictions as a result of, of a result of reclassification if county took it over. May have some challenges with development opportunities. McCormick Power Dam Road, so this is in North Glengarry. What's interesting with this roadway is it actually has higher traffic volumes than some of the county roads that are adjacent to it. And that was why that was brought up as a potential road to have a good consideration on. Total points scored was just slightly under the six, but, but still scored relatively high, particularly when we consider some county roads that scored below that. But we did conclude the existing classification was appropriate. Why did we come to that conclusion? Because there are existing county roads that serve that area, maybe not as a direct route, but there are alternatives that can, that are provided by the county at a higher standard in terms of right-of-way width, pavement width. The McCormick and Power Dam Road does not provide direct service to settlement areas, whereas the county roads that are adjacent to it, like, you know, County Road 10 as an example, goes between Alexandria's settlement area to Glen Robertson. So there's a direct link there between settlement areas where McCormick does not have that, that link. Primary function of that roadway is property access. But again, we understand it's used as a shortcut and, and so this spurred some of the other conversations we'll have after kind of finish this, this discussion. County Road 6 is a road we reviewed. As you can see, County Road, the criteria score was very low on this one. It was 2.5. And 6 runs between County Road 15 to the, to the Finch Roxborough Boundary Road and then also up to the Prescott Russell Boundary. It does have a discontinuous alignment, as you can kind of see on this map. And where the committee felt on this one is that it actually may be considered for reclassification, but it really depends on some of the discussion we're going to have around Finch Roxborough Boundary Road. Because right now, the way that road is aligned, it doesn't really provide for good and effective traffic movement through, through this area. And there's a demand for an efficient connection between County Road 43 up towards the 417. And that's what Finch Roxborough is serving. North Dundas, County Road 9. We don't, we can't forget North Dundas. So County Road 9 between County Road 43 and County Road 7. It is the bypass to the north of Chesterfield. Has very, very low traffic volumes, around 500 vehicles per day. Did not score very high, again, in an area where there is some, you know, challenges with residential development because it is under county jurisdiction. I will, you know, fully admit, without looking at the official plan designation, there may be some limited opportunity anyway because it is agricultural. But again, it's a good reminder that there are restrictions associated with county roads that are otherwise not there. County Road 30, oh, so, excuse me, and I, so I guess at the, at the end of the day, the committee's conclusion on County Road 9, this piece of County Road 9, was that it met the criteria to be classified as a local roadway. County Road 37, which is Queen Street in Chesterfield, didn't score very high. It was a three and a half. But the account, the committee concluded that the existing classification was appropriate, so it should remain as a county road. It's within a settlement area, so there is the very few development restrictions associated with it. Does promote effective movement into Chesterfield and out of Chesterfield as an urban arterial extension. And the committee felt like this might be a good opportunity to consider as a connecting link type of model of roadway. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail very soon. Finch Roxborough Boundary Road, everybody's favorite in North Starmont. So it did score above that six threshold. Again, not that that's the only thing that counts in this analysis, but, but the committee did recognize kind of the function and role that Finch Roxborough is playing right now. And we did, we did land on the fact that it does meet the criteria to be classified as a county road. There is quite a bit of traffic north-south that's continuing from 43 up to the Prescott Russell Boundary. Does serve some commercial activity on that roadway. That said, it doesn't meet county standard widths or design criteria. It's a very narrow cross-section of roadway, right-of-way, has some challenges. So it does need some substantial investment to be able to bring it up to a county standard. And this is a good example of a road where we felt like, you know, when we start to talk about some alternative options here, and this is, I'll, I'll get into a little bit more detail with that. Right now Finch Roxborough Boundary Road is the, is the efficient link from 43 north. The committee, in looking at Finch Roxborough Boundary Road, looking at McCormick Power Dam Road, felt like there may be some opportunity for some engineering solutions where, not necessarily to change the road classification, but to improve, like to provide the service that is obviously lacking in the county road system. So the example that we brought up here is, in lieu of the full transfer of the roadway, which would be very expensive, time-consuming to acquire property, start widening roadways, that design, the full reconstruction, may be a challenge financially and from a timing perspective. What if we looked at alternatives, and I think that this is well worth pursuing, is looking at alternatives where we actually perhaps only take a portion of County Road, oh, excuse me, Finch Roxborough Boundary Road, but actually make it continuous with County Road 9. So we provide a continuous type of flow of traffic from 43 up to the Prescott Russell Boundary, although it's not going to be a straight line. If you made that, so, so as an example, we, you know, created a curve from Finch Roxborough onto County Road 9 in a continuous movement, and then connected County Road 9 there. Similarly, going back to County Road 15, create a continuous movement onto 15. So you make all of that the through road to go north, if, because that's where the traffic is going right now compared to 15 north towards Moose Creek. That may serve the purpose and get traffic off of Finch Roxborough Boundary Road at the southern portion, south of County Road 9, as well as what it would do was make it, it would make it discontinuous. So it actually creates some inefficiencies in that and hopefully move traffic off of that and move traffic onto County Road 15 to go north. So some of the alternatives that, that the committee felt were worth exploring in further detail, rather than just saying, let's take all of Finch Roxborough and be done with it.
Well, before, do you want to take questions as we go, or would you prefer finishing up and then the questions?
Are we close to?
So are we?
Yeah. So, so this, so that feeds into the implementation that I was talking about. It's actually how do we, how do we move forward with some of these recommendations that we're bringing forward to council? So option one is essentially do nothing, kind of accept this as it is, and then make just one-off determinations based on what council feels is appropriate, which is completely within its authority to do. Option two is the redirecting traffic. So this is again, coming to that Finch Roxborough concept. What about implementing and investigating road design options which direct traffic onto appropriate roadways? So what about introducing lower speed limits and some interruptions on Finch Roxborough? Try to get the track of, traffic off of it. Similarly, on McCormick and Power Dam Road, what about creating some inefficiencies in that roadway that people don't feel so, that that's the, that's the quickest way to go? So make it not the quickest way to go. Use the roads that are maintained as county roads to provide that through traffic service. Option three is a service agreement. So that's another alternative we could explore, is working with local municipalities to enter into service agreements to ensure that the road is achieving and receiving the appropriate level of service based on the use. So we kind of do that already with some of our roadways from a winter maintenance perspective. But the alternative would be, as an example, that the county would do winter maintenance on Tyotown and Ray Road on behalf of the local municipality because we do have, there's higher traffic volumes, there's a demand for a better level of service because of that traffic volume, and we can provide 24-hour plowing service. So that's, that's an example of how maybe an alternative service agreement could work between the county and local municipalities. And then of course, option four is just the road transfers, which of course is a very, you know, we can't just do road transfers today or tomorrow, I would suggest. We need to have to have a good discussion about who pays for what? How are we affecting this transfer? When do we want to do that? Et cetera, et cetera. So the table you'll see towards the end of the report is a summary of the finding and those potential options. So all of the roads I've just talked about where there is, there is some recommendations. That's available there. And then ultimately, I guess what we are hoping for at the end of this presentation is council to provide some direction. Where do you want us to take this next? And, and if we want to go down that road, like what's the timing that council would like to see for that? Last little thing I'm going to touch on is connecting links. So we, I, I mentioned it very quickly in my report. This is a mechanism that exists between the Ministry of Transportation and some like key connections between ministry highways and as an example, like a, 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 a country border, border crossing. Brookdale Road is a connecting link, so the city of Cornwall receives funding through the Ministry of Transportation to maintain that roadway to a certain standard so that, because it's providing a link between 401, 138 to the border crossing. We can take a similar approach and create a similar program here in SDNG. And it seemed, from the local public works side of things, there was an interest in actually pursuing that a little bit further. There's no doubt when I think of, and I'm going to use Alexandria, Main Street Alexandria as an example. You know, the county's thinking about traffic moving through it. We care about the surrounding pedestrian, like, don't, don't get me wrong, we care about all those things. But actually, you know, maybe the better way to think about it is actually to provide the local municipality kind of that full decision-making authority of that roadway, where they can set speed limits, they can main, you know, they have the full authority for it, but we still fund some of the work that takes place there because it is still the connection between the south side of Alexandria and the north side. At some point, I pray we have a bypass, then we might not need that roadway anymore. But we do need that roadway, so why don't we continue to fund it? And, but give the local municipality some more authority and jurisdiction to kind of do what is appropriate for the community. So that's, in a very high nutshell, what a, what a connecting link would be. Great location for those are often in those historic settlement areas such as Winchester, Chesterfield, Lancaster, Alexandria, where you have very tight confined right-of-way, a lot of things going on above ground and underground, and it would make a lot of sense. I'm not sure would make as much sense in newer developed settlement areas like Ingleside and Long Sioux, where the county road system's quite wide. It's, you know, there's a lot of good control there already. It could be something that's pursued, but I, I think the, where it would work best is in those tighter, older settlement areas. So that's, in summary, what the culmination of several years' worth of work and hard work distilled into a 20-minute presentation. So I hope, I hope this takes us somewhere.
It was 27 minutes, not 20, but it's okay, whatever. Counselor Gado, then Counselor Broad.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. A question, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to County Road 36 between the 15 and the 2, was very, very in passing mentioned in this report. I believe this whole exercise was kind of brought about because South Stormont had reached out to the county to see whether that road should be transferred back to the local municipality, based on the fact that now that we've got the wastewater funding, we're expecting hundreds of units to be built along that road. And we're looking to potentially bring in some improvements along that strip specifically, a sidewalk, help with pedestrian access, because it's probably going to be, in the next few years, the most heavily built-up part of the counties. And there's also that brewery, which also creates a lot of pedestrian traffic along that county road, which is a little bit uncommon for the area.
Yeah, happy to speak about that one. And that's, I would say that, when we talk about County Road 36, Liskam Road is another great example of how I would answer it. So we did evaluate County Road 36 as part of the study, in the initial 20. It still met the criteria for county road. We felt that in its current state and based on the current network, it still made sense to be a county road, so it didn't go any further. We didn't get into the kind of that detailed analysis that I talked about with each of the roadways here. What will, I think from the county's position, what will change that is whenever we see the Long Sioux Logistics Village get developed, the county is, which is the first in my career here, the county would, is, has come forward and council supported the idea that the county takes over that road that gets developed through that industrial subdivision. And to, like, from what we see, that's the trigger where all of a sudden we still have a continuous network that connects to the 401. Then it makes sense to start talking about 36 because its function somewhat changes in terms of its connection, like, Long Sioux is now expanded. That, that's, that to us is the trigger for when 36 gets looked at. Certainly, if council has the, you know, has the flavor to change that timing, by all means, that's, that's up to council.
Subsequent question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Well, I'm just hoping the township and the county can look at that particular spot because those homes are going to be built now that we've got the wastewater funding within the next few years. So that, that kind of desire in the community to potentially work with the county to see if there'd be an option for us to create that sidewalk is something I think the conversation needs to happen sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Broad.
Oh, thank you, Warden, through you. More of a comment, thank you Director DeHan for a great presentation and information. One of the things that I enjoyed the past spring at our roads tour, Derek took us through the presentation, and he talked a lot about a lot of these roads, especially some of us sat at the front because we were always chatting. And I think that for us to see the roads again, it makes a whole lot of sense to some of the things you're describing, you know, not living in North Stormont, but that Foxborough, that whole description drawing of curving those roads, that made a lot of sense when you went out and saw it. So I think as part of the process, we should go look at those potentially roads again if we're going to take on a big challenge of executing a lot of changes. So just wanted to say, the roads tour, seeing them physically with your own eyes versus the map, I think will help us, since, as you said at the start, we ultimately decide as a council, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Counselor Burshon, did you?
Thank you, Warden. I'm trying to understand how we're going to make a decision here because we have six townships. And as North Dundas, of course, I don't agree with your Liskam Road decision. And, you know, on that point, I'm thinking, well, I'll trade you County Road 9 for Liskam Road. But I'm sure that each township may not agree with a specific road that you chose. So I just want to understand how the decision-making is going to occur here, or if you should have these discussions with each individual township on what county's going to do. I'm just confused about that.
Okay. Ben? Sure. So the roads that we evaluated came through public works directors at each of the local municipalities, and so Jamie has been a participant all along, like, this, he had this report, draft report, and had been part of the discussions for the last two years. So I would, I would suggest that, you know, it's been great to have that participation. This is not being done in isolation of the county. To date, I think we've had some broad support, and I can't, you know, I don't know what happens when I'm not in the room in terms of what's being said, but, you know, I think we've had some broad, like, everybody kind of agrees with what this says, and ultimately it's up to council. And it's not, it's not a, it's not a decision that Ben DeHan is making. This is, we've looked at the roadways, this is, this is how we as public directors feel, how it should be managed and maintained. Liskam Road as an example, I think there's a great opportunity there to improve that roadway, to actually improve it to a standard that's fully loaded rather than have, like, when all of these things start to happen, the consideration of what that road is doing changes very significantly. So it's just, it's not, this should not dissuade North Dundas from continuing to try and work with the county on improvements to that roadway and potentially considering it as a county road in the future. That's not saying it's never going to happen, this is just saying where things are in this snapshot in time. It's, it doesn't make sense.
So just to that point, you know, I look at, if you say North Glengarry, for example, you know, we're, Deputy Mayor Williams and I are two of seven, so we have five people that have not probably seen this report. Is there, is there an opportunity for, and I looked at the future warden, for the counties to, you know, along with our local staff, to maybe make presentations in, in our local municipalities so that they can wrap their head around it and we can, you know, the other members of council can ask questions and, because, you know, again, it's, we're all the minority of our councils here. So I just think that might be something that would be pretty prudent to do. And, you know, I go back to Counselor Broad, and, you know, it's easy, you know, if I get up and I start talking to you and saying, you know, "I can't believe that we're not doing Power Dam Road because 21 does all these jots, it ends up at County Road 6, where we offered County Road 6 to the counties, get rid of 24, meets at 30 and 22, Jason just thinks I'm just throwing numbers out." So I think that that might be another opportunity, and, you know, it's not necessarily a roads tour to look at what the future is, it's a roads tour to look at these roads, so. Just my two cents there. Counselor Landry?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And on that note, I think if you did present, you would deal with the actual municipality and not as a global counties towards your municipality. My question relates back to, so, we tend to be a little different in the fact that our Roxborough Boundary, Finch Boundary, is looking at converting compared to everything else is the opposite. With respect to the little proposed making the Roxborough Boundary turn in and flowing into 9 and then back to 15, my only thing I think personally, and I mean, it's my township, I live basically a couple kilometers from there, it's, it would be, it would not serve the need. So anybody going to Moose Creek would turn down the 8 and go, they would not go all the way up to 15 and then backtrack back into Moose Creek. Same thing, anybody going southwest, so say Finch Newington, would not go to Avanmore, they would still take the, that portion. So I understand that it is a big stretch, that's not in, to be rebuilt would be a substantial cost. But I think from Prescott Russell, so the 27, coming up all the way to 9 would make sense. I see the old 6 that curves up to 15, it scored so low, I could see that becoming a local road. And, but then stopping there, because what happens, people are not going to go to 9, down to 15, come into Avanmore, you've got that little S, you're going a railroad track, you're crossing town. Anybody coming from the Monklin area will use 138, or if they're on 43, they'll be at the Boundary. They will not go through Avanmore. So the 15 connecting with the 9 to Roxborough, and maybe Deputy Mayor can add...
He's just throwing out numbers, he doesn't...
Yeah, yeah. Everybody else is...
He has no idea what he's talking about.
The only one that's following me, Steve. Yeah. So Ben, I think, is following, but it's just that, to do the investment, just to make connecting 9 to 15 is not, I think, the direction that the people, they will still revert back to staying on and not going through Avanmore. Steve, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll take your 6 and raise you 9.
Yeah.
But actually, when I look at 6 and I look at 9, they fundamentally produce or result in the same thing. They take you off of the north-south, the Finch Roxborough line, and take you over to 15 in between Moose Creek and Avanmore. So when you go off 6, which I agree needs to be downgraded if it's not already down there, or 9, it's going to take you almost to exactly the same spot on 15. So whether you turn left and go into Moose Creek, or whether you turn right and go into Avanmore, it just, I don't think it's accomplishing anything. Fundamentally, as the mayor said, I think people who are on the 6 portion that's above the Finch Boundary Road, for the most part, are going to continue down south and get to 43. That's really where they're probably headed, or vice versa, they're heading north and should be heading north on 43. I agree that that road will probably need some work, and it is restrictive, but it's nowhere near as restrictive as going through Main Street, Avanmore, especially when there's roads or cars parked on the side of the road. Again, we're looking at for North Glengarry a bypass, this would almost feel like an Avanmore bypass, if you will. And if somebody's trying to go east-west on the 6, and I don't think this is going to happen, but it would almost make more sense for the 6 to carry on, which it does, and go north of Moose Creek at some point in the future if people need to get over to the 138 from there. So again, I very much support the, making the full Finch Roxborough Boundary Road a full county road. And I think that will actually improve the traffic in that, and it will also help to remove some of the traffic from the settlement areas. There's not a lot of houses or buildings on that area. So by definition of what we talked about last time, in terms of the number of entrances, it may already meet our current standard in terms of the number of entrances that are on that. So that's, that's my thought. But also, I agree, a delegation might be good because then we're talking to the people who are, who live close to home.
Good. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Warden, and I'll try not to throw a bunch of numbers out because we only have one road we're talking about. But I do agree, I believe it needs to come back to our local, our local councils. And it's, it's not, you know, I recall when the downloading or up, I guess it was downloading at County Road 4 was created and we took it over now Lake Shore Drive. There wasn't a lot of discussion at our council table because it was kind of in the transitional period of council, but there was very little discussion at that time in terms of the agreement. What we were kind of told was the agreement's already done and there's really nothing else we could say about it. So I do agree, I think it gives us the opportunity at the lower tier to have a full discussion on it. And also, for our sake as well, we will engage the planner to try to determine how much more lot severances can be created on our local road if we do take it over as a local road. I mean, that's important to us as well. Now, on your maintenance agreement, I did notice, and I'm assuming it's a two-way street, if South Dundas was to assume the responsibility of the county road, that, that at the county level, we would be responsible to ensure that it is upgraded as well to a level to the satisfactory of the local municipalities. Just noticed, I think in the wording, maybe I just didn't read it correctly, it seemed like if there was an upload, there would be an obligation to the local municipalities, but it didn't really say about a download as well. So I'm encouraging, I'm assuming it's a two-way street on that, right?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. So I guess that has been the approach we've taken in the past, that, you know, we would not want to give a lemon, if I may, one way, nor would we want to receive a lemon. I will say, though, like, my experience in North Dundas has certainly demonstrated, you know, fiscal challenges at the local level, and I'm not necessarily convinced that that's, I think that the county can have a bigger role to play if, if, if we are, you know, we don't want to create an undue financial burden. Because I'm not, if I'm being, like, we'll talk about Finch Roxborough Boundary Road as a road that the county assumes as an example, like, I don't think it's fair to say that North Stormont should upgrade that roadway to county standards before we touch it, because it's, then I don't have to worry about it in my career, because it's not going to happen, like, and I, just to be frank, like. But, but that being said, I think that there's an opportunity, like, I think we can find something that really works, really works for everybody. I think that's completely fair and reasonable, and that's the direction I think we should take.
Yep, that's a good idea. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. Do you know what the cost would be per kilometer of rural road, given possibly that we're receiving 17 of them? Because I won't, I won't say that I know about roads, I won't talk numbers, but if this is the staff's recommendation, I'd just like to know what we're getting into. So how much?
Sorry, I said staff's, like, I don't even, I like the findings of what, you know, at the end of the day. What the, what the cost is, I would have to do some number crunching to figure that out.
May I continue?
Depends. Go ahead.
All right. So I won't get into the 22% of county levy coming from South Glengarry, but I am effectively going to ask my, like, the citizens of South Glengarry to probably receive a lower level of service but pay more, essentially, if we're taking on locally. So it's just, I, it can be a fair thing to do, but it has to be done a right way, right? So if it's the right thing to do for the system, I can get behind that. I appreciate having a level and standard. I would just appreciate if these two roads come our way, that we get to the Lake Shore Drive treatment, because I think that was handed down to South Dundas in a quite great repair. And we would need some time to, say it was $100,000 per kilometer, and it may be more now. We're essentially increasing our taxation 1%, 2% locally for these accommodations. So if it can be built to a standard so that we can slowly prepare to get it to our local, it's just how it's done matters to us. Like, I'm, I don't need to talk about moving roads, just how we do it in a fair way.
Counselor Lang, I've already volunteered you to go to all the meetings, you don't have to do it right now, so, go ahead.
And thank you, Mr. Warden, I accept that.
Good.
And just to add to Counselor McDonald's, I think, and I'll start off by saying I think it makes sense, what you've recommended for South Glengarry. To me, it does, I think you're bang on. It's just a matter, I do think we, as most other people have said, we need to bring it locally, especially before we make a decision here, that everybody's on board and realizes where we're, where we're going with it. If it takes a little time, that's fine. And then the decision is what state it is when we take it over, the sort of thing, because I was kind of hopeful that the funding that came to the counties was based on the kilometers, but I guess it's just on taxation, so.
Yeah.
We don't get to claw any of that back, but anyway, I'm in support of it, and I think each township is, we're likely not going to make too many comments on other townships, but each township needs to talk about it locally.
Okay, so if I can kind of wrap this up, I think we're all in agreement that we get something in maybe Q1, Q2 for a visit from the counties and, along with our own roads superintendent, to do a presentation on these roads and everybody get an understanding of that, everyone's good with that. And, you know, maybe in, in early spring that we maybe, actually, you know, once you've visited the townships and we start to see more, something evolving, is that we actually do a ride on, and specifically just for the, for this kind of discussion. Is everyone okay? Anything I'm missing on this? No? Okay, we're good?
Great.
Okay, great. By the way, just, you know, congra, you know, good job to all the staff here and our local staffs. I mean, it was, that was a fantastic report, for sure, so, good job. Sorry, I'm just trying to find the, what's next on the adjournment? All right. Motion to adjourn.
It's moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Dencham. The committee adjourned to the call of the chair.
So thank you, everybody, for getting us through this discussion. It's something we've all been, we've been talking about for a few years, so, I know Counselor McGillis and I talked about this five years ago, and I was good to see something about the entrances, and so thank you to staff for the reports. And motion to adjourn, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thanks, everyone.